If I could, before I say the invocation, I've been here almost every city council meeting for the last four and a half years, and I don't do this very often, but I just want to say that I am very proud to be a part of this community. I have watched in the last month where our country and many cities across this country are divided, but I've watched this town. We've had prayer rallies, we've had peaceful protests, we've had all kinds of things, and I've seen the city council members, our mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, I've seen them all rally together and show true leadership and community. I'm proud to be from Peru, Indiana. I just wanted to say that before we pray.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings. We ask you, Lord, to continue to bless our nation, bless this city. We thank you for our leadership, our council, our people that serve on boards throughout this community. We thank you for our police and fire department. We just pray your protection and blessing upon this community. We pray, Lord, that as our children go back to school and things open up, that you would lead and guide and give wisdom to the school leaders. We pray for health and safety upon all of our citizens, and we ask you to bless this meeting tonight. Fill this council's mind with wisdom to make choices that are the best for this city. And we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Local.
Anderson.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Woco.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sahadashini.
I am here.
Wolf.
Here.
Reading and correction of the journal of minutes of the regular meeting on June 1st, 2020.
I move we suspend the rules and dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Next order of business, communications.
I have something. I'm on the aviation board, and I went to the meeting on, oh shoot, I forgot to write that part down. Anyway, it's the second Tuesday of every month. Budget report was in within limits. The rents are all up to date. The fuel cost, they have it lower than Grissom, Wabash, Kokomo, Logan'sport, or Rochester for the 100 low lead. It's at $3.65 a gallon. The engineering report was, they are waiting on the FAA to sign the CARES grant, and they used that money to buy the credit card reader, electrical rehabilitation project for the runway. Michiana Contracting won the bid at $295,430.50, and that's all contingent on the grant from the FAA. That was in the amount of $370,000. On a really fun note, we have the fly-in open house on July 25th with the 26 being the rain day at 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Johnny Walker and his Hueys will be there. They're going to have food and drinks and hopefully some vendors to show off their wares, and the proceeds will go to charity, and they haven't decided yet which one. And on another note, one of the pilots asked me to tell you guys that we might need a pilot or two to fly the charity event at the airport. They need to be a private pilot or better, minimum 500 hours PIC. If you are interested, please contact Ron Fear now, and I have his phone number. It can be in the minutes at 574-205-2480. And if there's any pilots out there listening, they would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, I have something as well. First of all, I want to thank Dave Moon and you for the Fourth of July fireworks being on the mayor's page. I thought that was really nice, and a lot of people were able to take advantage of that who didn't quite feel comfortable going out into the community. So, thank you very much for that work that you did. It was really an enjoyable, fun fireworks festivity. The last three and a half weeks, I've been contacted, as others have been, about some concerns within our community. And I've talked with the city council, I emailed them and discussed this a little bit, and I talked with Esten. There are some minority groups within our community that are feeling, how do I say it? That we need, well, that we need some diversity training, some education, and not only for liability reasons, but they're concerned that they're not being represented, and I was hoping that some of them may be here, but that's not the case. I attended the last peaceful demonstration and heard some really good, some concerns and some very good viewpoints, and I've reached out to Banda Olakara of the Miami Indians, and they have some concerns as well. So, and, you know, I've talked with many who said, you know, that some comments last city council meeting didn't offend me, or, you know, you, or whatever, but it has offended some people. Now, this has caused some assertive dialogue on the city council a little bit, very passionate on both sides, but, Mayor, I just am bringing that to your attention, and that there are concerns that that may be a need for the city. And I don't know, on the 24th, I know that there's a group that are meeting to discuss accountability throughout the city. I don't know exactly who that is, but with a group of minorities, I don't know if it's just the black community, or if it includes the Miami Indians as well, but, so that's going to be something coming up within 18 days. So, I could always learn. I don't, you know, I only know what it's like to be a Caucasian, and I feel kind of silly admitting that, you know, it's hard to put myself in somebody else's shoes, so... But I told others that I would present this, and I really...
What time was the meeting on 24th?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I was just made aware of it just last night, a late phone call, so...
Okay.
But when I find out, I'll let you know.
All right.
I think they'll be reaching out to you, actually.
Yeah, this was the first I'd heard about it, so that's why I asked you if you knew what time or where it was going to be.
Yeah, I don't know what time, but I think they're going to be reaching out to all of us on the city council and whatnot, so... But there is that request, and...
Like I told you, I don't like being told that I'm a bigot.
That's not what they're saying.
But that's the way I took the email, and I just, I told you also that I am for the diversity training, but I want to do it because I want to learn something.
Right.
Not because I've been forced into it by people that I don't even know their names, you know? And this is going to cost money, and we've got to keep in mind, we're going to be dealing probably with a shortfall in our budget because of this pandemic. We can count on it, and our police department's going to be short, what, four officers at least?
Yes, by September.
We have a pace scale that can't compete with the law enforcement officers in the surrounding counties, and where in the world are we going to find $1.3 million promised for the building of the New Y? And I'll tell you something else, we are responsible for city services, and I don't want to be caught in a situation like we were with the tax caps where we had to charge $12.50 on our utilities so we could keep garbage pickup going. These are things that we're going to have to be dealing with, and it takes money to do that. And if we do this diversity training, we're going to have to make sure that we can afford it, and it should be voluntary.
I didn't do the training that a lot of you guys did, where you went to Indianapolis and learned about the different rules and procedures.
I didn't go.
I didn't do that, so I know that there's money somewhere left from me not doing the training. I'd be willing to, that money could be used for diversity training.
I have a feeling it's going to cost more than that.
Oh, I thought it was like five or six hundred dollars.
But we could do the diversity training online.
The thing is...
There's many different types.
But isn't it, I mean, if somebody, if a group in the community, or two groups in the community, feel that it's important, how do we not say that we can put money towards that?
They should come here and talk with us about it so we can figure out some way to get it done.
Also, but also, we're the...
It would have to be placed on the agenda for the whole council to discuss it and talk about it. Now is not the time to do that.
But I promised I would bring it to you.
You did, but now, in order to go any farther, I would say that they have to come before the city council and be right here so that we could figure out, all of us, where the money's going to come from, what exactly they want. You know, this opens up, and it's not that no one is not willing to talk to them, everyone here is, but we need to know what their plans are and what they're expecting from the city council, and how we can afford to have what they want.
But Steve and I are representatives for the city at large, you know, so I get calls from all over every district. I just had one about this from Mark's district, but, and they asked me to bring this to you, to this, and to, and I'm not, is that correct if I have to be on the agenda? This has to be on the agenda to discuss it? I don't think...
Not just to discuss it, but, you know, we're hashing over the same thing. We need to know what kind of diversity training they're wanting to implement, but so that we can see what it's going to cost.
You don't feel like it's a need?
Whether I feel like it's a need or not is not the question here. The question is, how can we pay for what it is that they're asking when we don't know what kind of diversity training they're wanting us to get?
I'm wanting to learn. I'm wanting to learn whatever I can.
So is everybody else here.
I know, but I can just speak for myself, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
And he's right, we all would like to learn. That's why we're here too.
Yeah.
Not just to serve.
Because we're supposed to, yeah, okay, all right.
But we need to get the folks to come in here and talk with us, and get it on the agenda so we know where we're going. And I don't know who they are, so you'll have to do that.
Okay, I'd be happy to. I think that that's, will be upcoming very soon.
Excellent. Anything else, Kathleen?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have any communications? Next order of business is unfinished business. Council to vote on vacancy for the preutility service board that was postponed last month, allowing the position to be advertised.
Please place your X's and pass them this way. Formulate.
Do people want to know who's up for? Do we tell anybody what's on?
We had four applicants. Kurt Crosscuff, Ron Mofield, Dennis C., and Dave Van Bailey were our four applicants for the seat.
Has the council made a decision?
We just now voted. She's going to tally the votes.
Four of the votes went to Dave Van Bailey, so that would be majority.
So Dave Van Bailey is our representative?
I vote, yeah.
Okay.
Susan, can you?
You want me to read them?
Just who received the amount of votes.
Okay. Dave Van Bailey got four, Ron Mofield, one, Dennis C., two.
Okay, new board member will be Dave Van Bailey.
Tom, a motion to appoint him.
I make a motion that we appoint Dave Van Bailey as the appointee to the utility board.
I'll send that motion.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Woco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, next order of business. New business, additional appropriation, resolution number 10-2020, whereas it's been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget.
Does anybody have any questions on what the appropriations are?
Will you go over and please?
Okay. The first appropriation for $50,000 is for the streets department. Their lawn relief machine broke in the fall, and they had an opportunity to get a new leaf machine at a really reasonable price, and they bought that out of their non-reverting fund, and so that's why we need the appropriation. And then, the $90,000 is for the tough pads for the police that he's already discussed previously.
Okay.
When is that going to be done?
The tough pads are done.
They are done?
They're done, installed, all working.
Everything working good?
Yep.
Great.
I move we consider this resolution, number 10-2020.
Second.
There you go, writing fast.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Woco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Will this come up for adoption in the next meeting, or do we do that tonight?
No.
Tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move we adopt resolution number 10.
Second.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Woco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, additional appropriation, resolution 10-2020 was passed. Next order of business is joint resolution 2020, joint resolution of the elected and appointed bodies of Miami County, Indiana, opposing the Indiana Department of Transportation and plan to install J-turns, medium U-turns, et cetera, on Highway 31. Mr. Tid, would you step forward to the mic, please?
Again, thanks for the opportunity to come before you tonight with this proposed resolution and discussion on strategy and next steps from the US 31 Coalition and for Miami County as a whole. We drafted this joint resolution, and it would be our intent, for example, this morning, the Miami County Commissioner's considered and adopted it. We're here tonight asking for your consideration and adoption. We do the same thing in council, county council will do the same thing for the school corporations, so the town councils of Bunkers Hill and Macy, so just about every, the Grissom Regional Defense Alliance, about any entity that you can think of in Miami County, we're going to try to present this resolution to, to ask for their consideration. So, our thought was, rather than do a separate resolution for each end of each body that we presented, we would do one joint resolution and then attach all the signatures to that one resolution to send to the governor's office through Representative Manning and Senator Donato's office. So, I think you have received copies, maybe, of that resolution. I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have about it before, but I would ask you to consider and adopt this resolution this evening.
Do we have any questions?
When are they scheduled to start working on this?
I'm not sure of the schedule for construction. I know that they have already led bids for some of the design work.
Okay.
But when actual physical construction would start, I'm not sure.
All right.
The latest word that I've got, even kind of updated this morning by our sheriff, is that there is at least, he's told there's been nine J-turns planned for Miami County.
Wow.
Last I knew, there were seven or eight, but I think that may have gone up to nine. And so, you know, again, we are not, by this resolution, it even says, we're not saying that J-turns do not work, we're just saying that we don't believe they work on US 31 based on the volume and speed of traffic that exists on that highway. Someone was talking earlier before the meeting, there are J-turns already in the state of Indiana, there are ones on Highway 41 up near Chesterton, and there's some others down south, but when, and someone was even commenting about NDOT's video that they put on their website, and it's true, they have to speed up the timing on that video to show how traffic interacts. That's the lesser amount of traffic that's on 41 as compared to 31, so you wouldn't have to do that with 31, given some of the traffic volumes that exist.
Did they say that it was 2024 was groundbreaking for that?
I, well, I know there have been different dates put out there now. There are still intent, as far as I know, right now, there are still at least two interchanges that are planned in Miami County. One is at Business 31 and 31 out here for entryway into Peru, and then the other one is at State Road 18. But interchanges that I can think of right now, and I apologize if I forget any, but where they have J-turns planned is at State Road 16, then moving south, come down to County Road 400 South, County Road 500 South. 400 South is Pike Creek Elementary, 500, of course, is the campground, then 218 West, 218 East, County Road 800 South, which is the entryway into Grissom's Industrial Park plus McConaughey School Road, County Road 850 South. I think I've got them all. I may have missed one in there somewhere, but that's the current plan that's on NDOT's website for J-turns.
So if they only have two scheduled, what would happen to Grissom when it comes to, you have to go all the way up to Business 31 to turn around to go back to get to Grissom?
No, those would be J...
If they don't have the J-turns?
Oh, no, no, no. They would stay, what our recommendation is, is basically eliminate the stoplights, put the interchanges where you said you were going to in the first place, don't do the J-turns, let's see how things go.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, so there wouldn't be the closed-down freeway that has been talked about before. The initial vision was for US 31 to become a full-blown freeway.
Right.
Well, that's totally out of sight for NDOT right now. Their goal is to make it stoplight-free, so let's do, you know, the interchanges at the stoplights like they had planned, and then, you know, let's leave well enough alone, let's see how things work. Don't put J-turns that are going to cause bottlenecks and potential accidents, especially when school buses and semis are involved.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the audience?
Yeah, we're not carmel. We don't get the overheads. That's what ought to be put on 218, should be an overhead put in, just like they got in carmel, run into the 31 and out the other way.
Jim, you had a question, or, Tom, I'm sorry.
I just had a comment, because I was out at the fairgrounds when NDOT was out there, and they showed their video out there, and they showed the video there on 41. And if you can slow it down and look at it in your mind, when you saw these semis and these large vehicles, and I know a big concern in the northern part of the county has been farm equipment, a lot of the people that came that night were farmers, and they're like, we have big, huge farm equipment trying to get through this thing, it's just going to be, you know, a mess. But for them to actually come around that curve, to come back around, to head back the other direction, those vehicles, those large vehicles, were actually going off the berm.
Yep.
They weren't even still on the road, because they were trying to make that swing. In the meantime, you've got traffic, just like you're talking about 31's so crazy out here, some people going 70 miles an hour out here, you try and get a school bus trying to get turned around out there, and they're not on the road anyway, they're on the berm, and they're not going 70 miles an hour like the rest of the traffic, I'm telling you, it's going to be accidents.
Yep.
I mean, you could just see it.
At that meeting, former sheriff, Tim Miller, said, "You might as well just take the lights out and leave it like it is.
It wouldn't be that safe."
And Bill Friend was such, you know, he was so huge, he was so, trying so hard to go against this in any way, shape, or form, and he said, "The state has the money to do a roundabout. You want to do something that'll help, and you're bound determined you're going to change it, do the roundabout, invest the money and do the roundabout, and forget the J-turn that probably isn't going to work for you, and then you're going to come back and you're going to need to change it."
No, not a roundabout. You know, down.
There is a difference.
I got to go to Indianapolis tomorrow at 6 o'clock in the morning, and I've got to hit four of those things.
You got a roundabout.
And I don't want to.
Dave?
If you want to see one, there is one on 24 Carroll County, they banked it.
Oh, we're going to Lafayette.
Going Lafayette, you can see one. And I would not, I don't drive a semi, I wouldn't even want to try and attempt it through that.
Yeah, the video alone was enough to scare me.
Do we have any other comments? If not, I move we consider the joint resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Woco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sahadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. Just one other real quick update. Of course, we closed on the bond, so thank you for your vote of confidence on that. We closed, it was on 19th, my date reminds me, June the 19th. So, we are finished with that. We transferred the property, the 10 acres, to the YMCA. So, we have met, as an update, we met with Integrate Build, they're designing specifications and stuff for us to put out for bid for the walkway and the trail, and so we hope to have that actually starting to be advertised in August, maybe award the bids in September, and then, once we get through with that season in October 1, start working on the trail, and hopefully that'll be completed, given the weather, maybe, actually, yeah, this year, who knows? And then, the other thing was, the next part of that is housing, and so we're working yeah, this year, who knows? And then, the other thing was, the next part of that is housing, and so we're working on a request for proposal through the mayor's office to send out to potential developers that are interested in working with the city in partnership on housing development on the remaining acres in that parcel. So who knows? We could have construction of a Y, construction of the trail, and housing all being constructed at the same time.
That'd be amazing.
In a perfect situation. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Jim, I've got one question. Jim, I got one quick. There's some cement blocks down there on the Riverwalk. Who's, who's responsibility for those that need to be taken, taken out? I mean, there's some big ones in there.
Are you talking about?
On the Riverwalk on...
Behind the event center.
It's between the, um, the old yards.
The actual, not, not a block, but like an actual foundation? Is that what you're talking about? The actual foundation?
I mean, there's some big ones in there.
It'll be on the developer? If it's on the Y's 10 acres, why is, why would we be responsible for removing it? If it's on wherever the developer's?
Yeah, and most of that, what we found is that that can actually be crushed on site and used, would be our recommendation to some of the developers. But if you're talking about that pile, okay, that sits just east, that would be on the housing developer that's part of the development site for the housing.
Sounds fun, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, back in, for just a minute, joint resolution 2020 been considered, passed, and adopted. Now, thank you, Jim, for coming through. Any comment from the audience?
I have, I have one thing that I didn't mention earlier, but I'd like to mention. As somebody who, who's here in the audience, his name is Danny Mongosa, and he is from Florida, but he's here taking care of his elderly parents right now. And he has a really cool art installation that he's going to be doing on Pat Roberts' building right across here from City Hall. It's called the Global Angel Wings Project, and it was developed in 2012 by Colette Miller, and they have them in all big cities. And we thought maybe we'd be the first one here in Indiana, but Evansville just put one in, what, two weeks ago or a week ago? So, yeah, so, it'd be the third. But they're big, they're these huge angel wings. I think Danny might have pictures of them, but they're really cool. All the kids like them, they want to take their pic, you know, selfie in front of them.
Oh, yeah.
There's a national registry, it's free to belong to, and so they have them in Nashville, they have them in LA. So it's going to be really cool to have one here in Peru. And I, I don't know if you guys have questions for Danny, or you want to know anything more about it, but it's just going to be right here across the street. He has it kind of sketched on there.
Yeah, well, well, basically, the situation is, it's a project I've been actually wanting to do for quite a few years, and just finding a location, it was kind of hard to do. And we were luckily, with best of health, we talked to Pat Roberts, and he's donated the side of the building over here. And what it is, is the size of the wings is about 13 feet long, and the wings themselves is about four feet, but it's about six to seven feet above the asphalt. And it's an interactive art mural of just plain white angel wings that people can stand up next to and take their pictures with. Like Betsy mentioned, the Global Angel Wings Project started in 2012 out in LA with an artist, and since then, hundreds of wings have appeared all across the world. As a way, the way they discussed it, she said the reason she did it was to remind humanity that we are the angels of the earth. And my hopes was to do one here in Peru, especially with all the turmoil and despair in 2020, and give a little positivity to the location. I've actually been talking with the art department, Mr. Mike Applegate, and he's actually going to get a art student to volunteer to help him with it as well. And just, I thought I might bring a little bit of positive energy to downtown. And I've been trying to work on it this past week, but with temperatures near 100 from sunup to sundown.
Yeah.
It's been a little rough, so. Had a couple officers wondering what I was doing, defacing the wall. I said, well, thanks, you have permission? I said, so to be honest, I saw the tape, was wondering why they let me continue to do it afterwards. But it's just one of those situations where I wanted to let everyone inform what I was planning on doing here. As a, I'll probably be here till the end of the month. I'd like to probably jump right back into it this week. I know the temperatures aren't going to even lower, so might as well just bear down and go through it. But it looks like I can get it complete here in the next couple of weeks. And it's just one of those things that I think of bringing all the positivity to downtown Peru. And I actually do have some printouts I can pass around to any of the guys who like.
Welcome home.
Oh, thanks.
And thank you for doing that. That's amazing.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and bring these up in Peru.
I emailed them to everybody tonight, too.
Did you see it? Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
I emailed them.
I talked to Kathleen probably about two months ago, because I know we're discussing a lot of art things. Where I live in New Smyrna Beach, Florida, it's a big art community, and a couple ideas that happened, and we talked about artists' residency that we already do. So I come from a big art community, and when I come back home, I see a lot of hospitals. And I think it's something that possibly down the line, you might see a lot of murals pop up and get a chance to have the council look at them, have a committee, you know, involved in something like that. So I'm proud to be able to do this.
Well, thanks for doing it, Danny. So nice to have somebody come back and give back.
Thank you. This is something Mr. Tid and I just talked about on a couple of other buildings, similar, not the angel wings, but...
Right. Yeah, I had been discussing with Pam Popper of the Heritage, and I was one of the first choices, I thought Blue Angels, how can you go wrong with that name? But she was looking for something for the whole length of the building. I just didn't want to put 90-foot wings on the side of the building. The whole point was to take a photo when you're standing next to the wings, and unfortunately, 90-foot wings would be the corner Broadway and Main Street probably.
Yeah.
So this one, you can actually get within about five feet, you take some great pictures. And with the, I believe there's a bridal center nearby.
Right.
A lot of bridal photos are taken from wings throughout the way in Florida. So it's a great picturesque location. Once it gets completed, might be a lot of, might even be a lot of new people coming from out of town just to find it. And I believe Sherwin-Williams is planning on doing butterfly wings in the fall, and eventually you could have a wing walk downtown.
That'd be great.
And thank you. That's something to think about at Christmas time.
There you go.
Anything else from the audience?
Miles, what's this on here? Communications thing. Oh, no, we already did that.
Yeah, but we're doing it again. Do you have something?
Nope.
Okay. The only thing I have that I didn't say before to let you know on our West Main Street project and our North Broadway project, my crossing roads grant that we applied for in January did come through. We are going to get the money from that. They were supposed to start on West Main Street from Broadway, clear to Cobers this month. However, the construction company is behind, that got the bid, and now they're looking at next month. And I told them, I said, I would settle for the middle of this month, since we're not going to have the circuits. But what they're doing, they're doing all of West Main Street from Broadway, clear down to Kelly Avenue, and then North Broadway from 7th Street underneath the Viaduct to Daniel Street. Altogether, it's right at $1 million, and the grant's going to pay for half of it. So, to let people know where we're going from there. Also, on the railroad crossings, we've been in touch with them over and over and over. It's a constant battle. I talked to, I didn't talk to them, but my street department superintendent has been calling them. They told him they would be in here possibly next week, if not the week after. What had happened, they had replaced rails, pulled the rubber out when they replaced the rails, didn't put the rubber back in, therefore the, the asphalt is breaking away and creating big holes. I told them if they didn't get it done, I was going to send a crew down there and pack the holes full. So hopefully, they'll do that before we have to do that. So, if nothing else from the council, city attorney, you have anything to say?
I have nothing, nothing at all.
Any comments from the audience? I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.